...in Selma, Alabama in 1963. Since then, he has worked on everything from immigration reform to an anti-lynching bill.
You can't be Dick Gregory's friend and not have a picket sign somewhere in your lifetime with him and also go to jail with him, and I've done both many times.
He didn't just open doors, he kicked them down and opened the era and encouraged the kind of activism that changed American society for the better.
Gregory's biggest praise went to Playboy mogul Hugh Hefner, who gave him a start as a stand-up comedian at his Chicago Playboy Club in the '50s.
There's a secret law: if you're black, you can sing, you can dance, but you can't stand flat-throated and talk. And he violated that.
Since then, Gregory has helped blaze a trail for black entertainers, and he's still going. I'm Anna Margos for LA This Week.
Dick Gregory's Hollywood star is located at 1650 Vine Street, just south of Hollywood Boulevard. San Pedro celebrates the groundbreaking of a new pool to be built at the site of an historic but dilapidated pool. The Hay Rookie Pool is now undergoing a multimillion-dollar renovation aimed at bringing it back to life. This million-dollar view overlooking the Port of Los Angeles can be found at the rundown and shuttered Gaffey Street Pool. The pool was built in 1943 on what was the former Fort MacArthur Military Base.
I swam in the pool in 1944, 45. That time, we did synchronized swimming for the war effort. We swam for the military in Fort MacArthur's pool.
The pool later opened to the public, and generations of children who grew up in San Pedro spent their summers in this pool. But for the past 30 years, the neglected pool located in Angels Gate Park had been closed.
You are standing on the ground that giants walked on. They beat the world, they rebuilt the world, and they gave us this wonderful treasure, and sadly, it was squandered.
This was once known as the Hay Rookie Pool, used by military men who fought in our World War II efforts in the '40s. And today, as you see, it's been trashed, and we're going to bring this back to life, breaking ground here. We're going to splash in this pool that you see before me, actually sometime next year in June of 2016.
Graffitied over and left in disrepair, the city is now pumping millions of dollars into rehabilitating the pool at 3352 South Gaffey Street. In addition to a new pool, the facility will include a new poolhouse, parking area, landscaping, and pedestrian walkways.
It's time for us, as a community, to once again have a high-quality pool so that we can create these new memories for our kids and our grandkids.
The Port of Los Angeles, the Bureau of Engineering, and the Fort MacArthur Museum Association are also involved in the project. In this week's list of things to do, get dapper for a special bike ride that's all about style and sewing the old-fashioned way. You'll get to try it yourself at a DIY event and an exhibit featuring groundbreaking Chinese The DIY movement is alive and well at the Skirball Cultural Center. On Saturday, February 28th, drop by between 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to join local artisan group Sew Cranky in creating fabric wallets and water bottle bags using antique hand crank sewing machines. The whole family will enjoy learning about this traditional craft practiced by many Jewish garment makers in the late 19th and early 20th centuries. The event is part of the museum's Last Weekend of the Month program. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org. If you like tweed and mustaches or just looking dapper in general, you'll love the Tweed, Moxie, and Mustaches Ride on Sunday, March 1st, organized by Cicle, which stands for cyclists inciting change through live exchange. The ride through northeast Los Angeles will go from 12:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So dress in your finest, because there will be a best dress handed out later. The ride will end at the Verdugo Bar with entertainment, competitions, a raffle, and more. For the starting location and other information, go to cicle.org, that's C-I-C-L-E. Twelve groundbreaking artists are being featured in a community gallery at the Chinese-American Museum. The exhibition entitled "Ink Painting and Construction of Contemporary Chinese Art" will be on view through March 29. Experimenting with subject matter, material application, and execution, the artists introduce contemporary vocabulary such as mixed media, conceptual art, action painting, and abstraction to their work. The Chinese-American Museum is located at the El Pueblo de los Anjolíes Historical Monument at 425 North Los Angeles Street downtown. Go to camla.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The Los Angeles Zoo is welcoming a new addition to its tiger exhibit, and it appears this guy is about to cause a roar. Yana K. reports.
Meet CJ, a 250-pound endangered Sumatran tiger who has become the latest member of the LA Zoo family.
He's full of energy, and he loves to play, and swim around in his pools and have fun.
The two-year-old came from the Sacramento Zoo and will now spend his days getting used to his new home that's filled with toys and other goodies.
It helps him to navigate his exhibit and grow up and get ready for a new female potentially coming for him to breed with.
This species of tiger comes from the Indonesian island of Sumatra, where officials say the species has seen a dramatic decline in numbers due to poaching and deforestation.
These guys are solitary animals. They live alone, they hunt alone, and they only come together for breeding, so they need large territories.
CJ, the smallest of the six remaining subspecies of tigers, will join a much older female Sumatran tiger. Both will be hanging out in the exhibit. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
Zoo officials say there are fewer than 400 Sumatran tigers left in the world. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at latview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. Our Twitter handle is @latw35. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
A single ember that escapes from a wildfire can travel more than a mile. You can't control where that ember will land, only what happens when it does. Get Fire Adapted now at fireadapted.org.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Mr. President, that takes us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
I think we should approve them all. Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Price seconds.
Very good, sir. There is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file Items 1, 3, 4, and 13. And as much as the liens for Items 1, 3, and 13 have been paid in full, and Item 14 was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing.
Very good, so ordered. Do we need to vote on those?
No, sir.
Order them as corrected, thank you.
Unanimous vote is okay. That brings us to Items 1 through 20. They're items noted for public hearing.
All right, 1 through 20, correct? Is that what you said, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, sir.
So on any of those items, are there any specials?
We do have cards, sir, for Items 1, 4, 7, 11, 12, 14, 17, 19, and 20.
So we'll call those specials, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Next item.
Mr. President, we should vote on the balance if no members wish to call any of the others special.
I don't see anyone calling anything special except Mr. Bonin. 29 special for Mr. Bonin. Any other special members? But he likes to do it twice, and it's okay with me, because I've done it 100 times that way. Mr. Clerk, let's...no other specials? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over for a second read in one week unless reconsidered later for 12 members.
Let's reconsider later. Mr. Inglis?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. 21 fourth with, please.
Is 21 fourth with okay, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we're about to enter that section, sir.
Good, we're into that section. Let's enter that section right now.
Items 21 through 30 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 21 and 22 have been circulated and are now before Council for consideration.
All right, so on those matters there, we have any specials? Mr. Clerk, if you could ask the IT person here on this screen, right here, if you could correct it for me? Thank you. So there's no specials on that, members? 29 for Michael Bonin, thank you, Michael. And no other specials? My screen is not working, so when you yell it out, it helps. Okay. That being said, on the balance of the issues, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes, thank you. 22 fourth with and 21 fourth with. Thank you. I can't see the screen. I'm on the screen right...
And again, sir, 21 and 22 are ordinances, and unless reconsidered later with 12, they'll go over for a second read.
We got that down, very good. Next item.
Very good, sir. Items 31 through 35 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Open the roll on the 10 votes for consideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes. On that matter, Mr. Clerk, any advice?
We do have cards on Items 32 through 35, sir. That leaves Item 31 for you.
All right, 31 in front of us, members. Anyone calling that special? Now let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes. Thank you. Next item.
Mr. President, that takes Council back to Items called special.
Items called special. Item 7. Sean Murphy, North Hollywood, California.
Yes, good morning. I am 7. It's a good project. It'll be good for the city. I support it.
No other cards on 7. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to Item Number 11, called special for cards.
Sean Murphy again for Item Number 11. A pass, thank you. Another card, no other cards for 11? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to Item 12, called special for cards.
Sean Murphy.
The reason I passed the other item, I don't want to use up my time. I am, again, Item 12 is a good item. I'm supporting, thanks.
Thank you for your support and your civic mindness. Arsilia Galicia, thank you. Please, your card, you can speak if you'd like. Thank you.
Oh, yes, I wanted to ask for you to please stop the lien on my property. The reason being is because I was never notified of any notices being sent. I have tenants there since 2005, and I've been living in my new address for the last decade, and I was never notified of anything from my tenants or from the city until recently. I just have new tenants beginning this year, January, and that's when I first knew about these amounts and compliances and monies that I needed to pay.
Thank you. Your councilman, Mr. Fuentes, has requested two weeks to get it resolved. His deputy will meet you over at the side. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two weeks.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, two weeks takes us to Council recess for League of Cities, perhaps three weeks? That would be March 18.
Thank you. All right, next item. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I think that takes us to Item 1, called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh?
Tom Labange never criticizes my slow walk because I'm crippled. The Herb does. Number 1 is very important. JohnWalshHollywoodHighlands.org, JWalshConfidential, @HollywoodDems tweeting hearing protest, building and safety. You're going to see other people come up here that have been primed by us. Remember, if they in any way have a false lien on your property or a false code violation, come here, speak, and what happens inevitably, and it will happen on this one too, if someone shows up, is that they will renegotiate it and bring the violation, either erase it or slow it down. Remember, code violations are only east of La Brea, where my fellow Jews own property west of La Brea. You almost never see a violation. I'd like to talk to any Jewish person who wants to debate me on this, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr...excuse me, Nora Campos? Hold on a second, please, hold on. Mr. Herman, turn down, turn down here. Please sit, I'll hold this card. Please be seated, okay? Yeah, I want to ask, I want to ask the clerk a question, okay? Sit down, okay? Sit down. Mr. Clerk, this item has been paid for? Has been, tell me what the business report...
Yes, sir. The Department of Building and Safety reports that the lien has been paid in full.
Okay, the lien has been paid in full. Next speaker, Mr. Campos.
Nora Campos. Transgender, Mr. Herman, Mr. Corcoran, stop being a racist and discriminating against me.
He is not speaking about this item.
Woman is not your business, sit down, let me finish. Please, please, look at the man, he's insulting me because I speak like a woman.
Mr. President, he is not speaking about this item.
I have the floor, I have the floor now, let me talk to you now. Regarding 4608 South Avalon Boulevard, for a lien of $8,295.05, I wish that you hold this lien on behalf of the family under the name Lopez, Mr. Corrigan Price, because I find your cycle of liens illegal when you do not certify the occupant who owns the property by certified mail. So, I'm telling you today, folks, I'm going to read just a couple of the liens. Mr. John Walsh was right. CD 7, a lien for $968.00. CD 7, a lien for $2,378.00. A lien and CD 7, $3,770.00. A lien and CD 7, $4,370.
Alright, stop. Thank you, Mr. No, you're not anymore, you're not speaking on the issue, Mr. Campos. Mr. Campos. Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker will be called, the time, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, he, he can be disrupting the meeting right now, he's not leaving the podium.
He is disrupting the meeting and not contributing to the welfare of this city. Please be seated. Thank you. Next, sergeants, the next time the speaker fails, please ask him to leave. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, we should still, uh, vote on, on this matter, uh, and again, there is a recommendation to receive and file it from the Department of Building and Safety, and as much as the lien has been paid in full.
Alright, so we should vote on that?
Or, you could approve it without objection, sir.
I could rule it?
Either one.
Yeah, I'll rule it.
Very good.
Next item.
Without objection.
Yes. Number 4.
That brings us to item number 4, called special for cards. Again, this matter, uh, the Department of Building and Safety reports that this item has been paid in full.
Thank you. Sean Murphy?
Yes, good morning, Sean. Item, item 4, it's another item I support.
Thank you, it has been paid, thank you. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes.
And again, that matter's been received and filed, sir.
Thank you very much, okay. Number 6, please. John Walsh. Do you have the call 6?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, JayWalshConfidential, this is another lien, $3,204.02. Uh, these liens, again, are almost always in minority neighborhoods because, uh, of the racism of the city of Los Angeles. Uh, the person who had the lien against, uh, that, uh, family, uh, believes that the lien, uh, Tuxford Street is racist, and, uh, may hire a lawyer. HollywoodHighlands.org, and remember, under the First Amendment, I can talk in any voice I want. This isn't Mexico, I can talk, it's for free speech. The Murphys fought for it in the Revolutionary War, and if I want to talk like this, I can, you racist.
Alright, yeah, completes the speaking card on that. Next item. Let's, uh, vote on it, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Mr. President, that takes us to item 14, called special for cards.
Gregorio Lopez.
Hi, my name's Gregorio Lopez, and I'm here today, um, because there was a lien put on, on the property, and, um, I rent the property out, I never got a notice, certified letter, and, the, I'm going to pay the, the, the balance, but if you, Mr. Price, if you could eliminate the interest, I would, it would really help my family a lot, and, um, and then set like a payment plan, as, fix it as soon as possible.
Uh, Mr. Price, three weeks will continue, and if you want to go to the side, the deputy for Mr. Price will consult with you.
Okay.
And Building and Safety, thank you so much.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, three weeks takes us to March 18.
March 18, very good. Now, item 34, please, we have a city attorney here? I'm calling item 34 right now, I'm not voting on it, just don't yell from the side, talk to the clerk.
That brings us to, uh, item 34, called special for cards.
34, please. John Walsh.
John Walsh, someone put in a card for 14, see if you can find it, it wasn't me. This is, uh, the Department of Water and Power, Receiving Station H. As you know, uh, Tom Labange will be going to work at, when he leaves here, for $200,000 at the LA DWP. Uh, they do a fairly good job in my neighborhood, but i- in parts of the valley, it's out of control. The, uh, this is an ordinance approving the execution, I don't like that word, execution, of a no-billed easement deed. In fact, uh, this is a waste of time. You have a billion dollars' worth of broken pipes in this city, and all you're doing is helping out Studio Lending Group by, uh, reducing the amount of money that they'll have to pay for their special no-billed. Easement means it's a phony deal, they don't have to follow the law. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, okay, so, any other speakers on that? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Lopez Maggers has been continued three weeks. Mr. Previn. Mr. Gias have all had cards, it's been continued. Do you need to comment on the continuance? Come forward.
Mr. President, we should first vote to reconsider this matter.
Alright, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Is it on 14 or 35?
14.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the way the public input has been treated on item 14, I'm really talking more to the people who are watching us. This is precisely why today the LA Daily News came out with no on Amendment 1, and no on Amendment 2.
He is not talking about this item.
I am, I'm talking about how we were treated for the discussion of amendment, of item 14 today, because the city looks at items like item 14, and disregards public input. You can see how we're treated, and this is precisely, precisely, while the LA Daily News today said no on Amendment 1, and no on Amendment 2, because the Daily News appreciates public input, we have a right to come here, in fact, you guys tell us, we have to speak to you. This is the public square, if I want to speak about item 14 to the people on Channel 35, I don't have to address you, this is the town square. I'm addressing all of Los Angeles, I'm addressing the people in this room. I can turn to talk to them about item 14 if I want to. I, I, I am talking not to you guys, I'm using the town square about item 14, about how our input on item 14 is disregarded. This is the reason why Daily News said no on 1, and no on 2. Do not give these people a fourth term where they're elected, but, but, but they're not challenged, I'm okay, I'll withdraw it.
The city attorney is a far better...
His discussion is better reserved for general public comment.
Okay, I'm talking about item 14, you should pay more attention, and be as polite to us on item 14, as you wish for us to be polite to you on item 14. Thank you for giving me my right to speak in the town square to whomever I want to, thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. President, this is a limited public forum, it is not a town square.
For the record, it is a limited public forum, it's not a town square. Next speaker.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn, uh, city resident from Studio City, and also a candidate in the CD 2, uh, election with Mr. Corcoran. This is a CD 9 matter, item 14, and this is one of 20 matters today that are on the similar subject. Six are lighting districts, but 14 of these matters are actually, uh, going after liens on people's property, and we do that with some regularity down here. Uh, this group, the guy came down, spoke very briefly, and said, "I'm a tenant, uh, this is a serious problem for me and my family", and Mr. Price, very courteously, I have to say, stepped over, swooped in, and then, um, they are going to continue it three weeks. Now, the, the question about the continuances is, uh, this is like delaying the guillotine over somebody's head, and letting them think about whether or not they want to come up with. In this case, because this was the biggest one, it's $8,500. Now, the initial fine was just a couple hundred dollars, $300, but what happens with these fines, sir, and I'm sure you've looked at this one closely, is there's a 250% markup immediately if you miss 15 days, and then another 15 days, and then it kind of quadruples. I mean, this guy's facing $8,000. Now, Mr. Price, to his credit, is trying to intervene, but he asked this group, and it's Building and Safety Inspection or something like that, and they, uh, say, "Well, we'll..." And then somebody said, "Oh, I'll help you, I'll help you." And, here's the problem. In my district, CD 2, there's a, one on Rainier Street, and I came down to advocate on it because I had asked the group to help out, and this guy, poor guy's getting hammered for stuff that was put in an alley by someone else, and they said, "We'll look into it," but then they've continued, 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 and as we all know, uh, those continuances don't really help, they just make it, delay it, defer it. So, this whole process, I think, needs to be looked at closely by the councilmen, uh, members, and Mr. Martinez, of course, that was not intentional, and, and we need to do it urgently, because it's sending a signal to the residents of Los Angeles City that we are a pest that needs to be tagged with fees and fines, and it's not appropriate. These are the less fortunate folks who are frequently getting tagged. I think Mr. Walsh makes the point, it's more in the east side. You know, let's, let's get this done, Mr. Labange, before you go, sir, where'd you go to high school? Come on, let's do it.
Marshall High, thank you, bye-bye. Thank you. No other cards on this item?
That is correct, and again, there's a recommendation to continue this matter to March 18, sir.
Three weeks, so continued, so ordered, correct?
Very good, sir.
You have to vote on it?
N- no, sir, without objection.
Next item.
Mr. President, this time, do you wish to reconsider the ordinances for 12 members?
Yes.
Very good, sir, those would be items 15, 16, 18, 21, 22, and 31.
And 21, why do we want to go for, forthwith on that?
21 and 22, sir.
For reconsideration, reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
So ordered, and 21, 21 members was...
Mr. President, those matters are now before counsel, with a request to send 21 and 22 fourth with, sir.
Okay, next item.
Mr. President, we should vote on those matters.
Alright, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes. 21 fourth with.
And 22, sir.
22 fourth with.
Very good, that brings us to item 17, called special for cards.
Sean Murphy?
Yes, good morning. Item 17, I am against, sorry.
Thank you, that's your comment, no other cards. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes, next item.
Item 19, called special for card.
John Walsh?
This is the, uh, first in Broadway Street Lighting District. Uh, this is an ordinance. Uh, this is a neighborhood with enormous amount of crime. If the lights go out for just one day, the crime goes up, the hit and runs. That's why we're 100% in favor of the street lighting district system, and, uh, when we had the carbon arc lights, which you've replaced, they were constantly going out. Remember, when you do a good job, I'm the first one to, to applaud you, and you have done a very, very good job on street lighting, because, uh, I used to call up, you know, every week, in my, in next to Capitol Records where I live, but, uh, nowadays, that we, we got rid of carbon arc lights, and everything is great. HollywoodHighlands.org.
No other speakers on the queue on this? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item 20. Sean Murphy?
How much time I got?
One minute, one minute, one minute, Sean.
Yeah. Item 20, I support.
Thank you, Sean. No other speakers on the queue, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes, next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 32, called special for cards.
Dr. Brown?
There's a good vision in Los Angeles now that we have, um, appropriate lighting to shine on us all. And with this ordinance for maintenance on the Figueroa 15th Street Lighting District, it is by far well-welcome, as all of us taxpayers will fund this maintenance projects, thanks to all you constituents of Los Angeles, all you taxpayers who opened up this town meeting so we can address all of you for all your endeavoring payments to make this possible to happen. So, I'm not going to run off my lip because I'm afraid by my transgender that I might be criticized for speaking inappropriately because I choose to speak in a most feminine voice for you, Mr. Corcoran, but I'll hold that time to one minute, have it all.
Daniel Gais?
Yes, street lighting, very good. The question is, is, is CD 14 getting better street lighting now than it should have been getting over the past eight years, or will Gloria Molina do better? I think she will, but you do a good job on street lighting. The question is, is it too little, too late, and that's why the Daily News said no on 1, and no on 2, because CD 14 is...
He is not discussing...
CD 14 is an underprivileged, lower-income community, and they've been getting short shrift on, on street lighting. I live in Sherman Oaks, we have great street lighting in Sherman Oaks, I live in the Magnolia Woods area. The question is, why are we not getting enough of it on C, in CD 14, and in the other lower-income communities? I like that you're doing more in street lighting now, but it's a little dubious that it's coming just days and weeks before, um, the spring primary, thus, no on 1, no on 2, thank you.
Craig Erickson? Sir, Greg Erickson? Thank you. Hold it. No other speakers? No other speakers? You have no other speakers? Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes. Next item.
That brings us to item 33, called special for cards.
No, I want to go 29.
Very good, sir.
Okay, let me call the cards now. Jean? I want to say it correctly. S-H-I? G-N-E-A-T-A? Schumatsky? Thank you, Jean. Followed by Jay Handel. Followed by Randy Sakamoto. Followed by Greg Erickson, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Council.
Sergeants, will you fix the microphone, please?
Good morning, Council. Thank you for receiving me this morning. I was just down with a contingent from the Sawtelle section of West Los Angeles in regards to this matter, to have it put up our sign and to designate this area for Sawtelle Japan Town. And I appreciate all... I haven't been here for several years, but I want to thank all of you for doing the great job that you're doing. Thank you.
Jean, 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 thank you for your done everywhere, everywhere. Big hand for Jean. Thank you. Jay Handel.
Yes, good morning, everybody. My name is Jay Handel, and I'm here today as the Chair of the West L.A. Neighborhood Council, in which the historic Sawtelle area is a part of our council district. Not only do we enthusiastically support the renaming to the Sawtelle Japan Town area, we've actually put in an application to change the name of our neighborhood council to the West L.A. Sawtelle Neighborhood Council to fully incorporate the historic meaning of our district and to help identify, finally, West L.A. as something people could look at and know that this is where West L.A. is, as opposed to where everyone understands where Beverly Hills and Palms and Mar Vista and Brentwood. No one has a clue where West L.A. is. If you're a real estate agent, it starts at La Brea because it brings the house prices up. But the fact is, Sawtelle is a truly historic area. This is a historic day for the people who have fought so hard and gone out and gotten the signatures they need and the support they need in the community, and your support just puts the icing on the cake. Let's get the signs up and make it happen. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Randy Sakamoto. And Sawtelle is a small community in West L.A. It's about a mile square, and there are many, many Japanese that live in this one particular area because due to restrictions of buying homes in, from the early 1900s to about 1950, there's large concentration of Japanese there. Our request for this sign is in recognition of the people that live there, the people that got educated there, the people that had jobs there and who have had large families, and they've all moved out through all various parts of this country and in this city. And we'd like to get recognition for the historical presence of the Japanese community in West Los Angeles. There are three large churches there. There's an Institute of Language, and there are many... If you've been to Sawtelle, the Sawtelle Boulevard itself has been revived, and it's very active community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Randy. Greg.
Thank you. Good morning. And I want to... I'm here. My name's Greg Erickson. I'm here with the West L.A. Neighborhood Council just to support this petition to rename our community Sawtelle Japan Town, to honor the historical and cultural roots of our Japanese-American citizens, and also bring together synergies around our community to engage new residents and new community members to participate in our neighborhood council and participate in our city. And I think by honoring our community and acknowledging the historical roots of our community, it's a good start for us. And I also want to thank Councilman Bonin and CD eleven for their support to help us move this through the process, so we look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call right now on your fine councilman, Mr. Mike Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm obviously asking for a favorable vote on this one today. I'd like to thank Jay and Jean and Greg and Randy, not just for coming down here today, but for all their work on this. On the west side, there's a number of pockets of my district that have historically had large populations of the Japanese-American community in Del Rey and particularly in the Sawtelle neighborhood in West L.A. It is a multi-generational neighborhood. There are folks who have been there for many, many years. It is a place that has wonderful Japanese nurseries, has a wonderful Japanese-American community, and it's a community that, over the years, has suffered persecution through restrictions on where they could live, through internment. And West L.A. and Sawtelle in particular has always been a home and a very strong and a vital neighborhood. And colloquially, the... informally, I'll try it better that way, the neighborhood has been known as Sawtelle or Little Osaka over the years, but there's never been a vote or a canvas of the neighborhood determine how they would like to be referred. And residents of the community and the neighborhood council went out and they canvassed, and they decided they want to be known by Sawtelle Japan Town, and that's what this recognizes today, and I look forward to this being approved and getting the signs made and installing them with the members of the community. So looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keretz would like to add along, as well as Mr. Sadio. Mr. Keretz.
I just wanted to add, since nobody's mentioned it, that also for my entire lifetime, this has been one of the areas with the best Japanese restaurants, not surprisingly, in Los Angeles, and I still will get out my passport and cross into CD eleven every once in a while and meet friends at one of the many truly fine restaurants in Sawtelle. So one of many notable things in this area, and I'm glad to hear that we're taking this step.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio.
I also applaud these efforts. As many of you know, I grew up in Borah Heights, and in Borah Heights, my best friends were Japanese-American. They lived right around the corner from me. And then they... But they moved to the west side, and I remember it was a big deal. They moved to the west side, and I thought, wow. On occasion, they would come back to Borah Heights and tell me where they lived, and they lived over towards the university. So I thought, well, that's interesting, and that was great. Later, when I went to UCLA, I discovered Sawtelle and have been going back ever since. And I was just there recently, and it has been. So what you're basically doing is acknowledging a reality that we, Paul and I, have known and observed for decades, a reality of a very vibrant, unique, special community that has all the elements that deserves its own special designation. And so I thank you for acknowledging a reality and send my regards to Wade and all my other friends who left Borah Heights and are somewhere out there on the west side. Now I know where they're at. Thank you.
Thank you. And in 1934, they opened the farmer's market at Third and Fairfax, mainly from all the farmers in West Los Angeles to put their trucks shoulder to shoulder and create the Village of the Farmers. There's nothing like villages in Los Angeles, and I think that great revitalization. Mr. Bonin, good job, good neighborhood leadership out there. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Item thirty-three, please.
That's item thirty-three, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh. It's on this item here. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes it is. Item thirty-five.
Item thirty-five, called Special for Cards.
Eric Previn.
Councilmember Labonge and the rest. It is Eric Previn, a resident of Studio City and also candidate in the CD two council district race. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. This is a very generous $10,000 is being earmarked at this point to Pacoima Beautiful, and certainly that is much appreciated. It is going to be to facilitate the, if I got it correctly, coordinating the acquisition of outdoor furniture and equipment for the Bradley Plaza. And so that is very much appreciated naturally. And in these communities, this is in, I believe, CD seven nearby, but in CD two, we also have these kinds of projects. And one, you know, type of funding, because this is not... I see where this money is going and where it's coming from, but one type of funding that is also useful for these kinds of projects is the Prop K funding. And as you probably know, there is some remaining Prop K money, and I know that Pacoima and others could use some of that Prop K money, but one of the details is that it's earmarked very specifically. And for example, in our district, we have some sway, the council member, whether it's myself, if I am elected, or Mr. Krikorian, who obviously is the incumbent, they will determine how that money is spent. And there's approximately three million...
Mr. President, he is not talking about item thirty-five.
Talk about the subject, please. Continue.
I'm talking about the funding of these kinds of projects for parks. And I mean, is Pacoima Plaza and the outdoor furniture not relevant? I mean, it seems relevant to me, but I'm talking about whether or not we should be knocking down a gymnasium that's small and putting up a double-sized basketball, which we don't really need in this part of the neighborhood in CD two and Studio City.
He is still not on top.
And so that's why I would just raise to the council members to hold the line, let's use that money where it's needed, like at Valley Plaza in North Hollywood and some of the parts of our district that could use some of this funding. Now, I realize it's nice to give to the folks who can say thank you nicely, but I also think that we should mitigate these...
John Walsh is the next speaker.
Jay Walsh confidential. Street furniture, believe me, we don't... I need street furniture like I need testicular cancer. The street furniture is fine. Why don't you take that $10,000 for BS street furniture and instead repair a couple of blocks' worth of pipes on the billion dollars? And then, when the pipes don't burst, I think people won't be saying, "But we really needed the street furniture." But I'm telling you why there's street furniture, because the people, the contractors who create the street furniture have deals and make big contributions to these people. Pacoima, I challenge anyone in Pacoima to make a phone call to City Hall and say you'd rather have street furniture than your pipes, water pipes repaired. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Daniel Guss.
It's good work by Mr. Fuentes. You have 12 years to do good work, not 13 and a half. Mr. Fuentes is using the early part of his time on City Council to do good things. That's why you have three four-year terms to do good work, like outlined in item thirty-five. However, Mr. Walsh does make a good point. What's more relevant, better sidewalks, water mains that don't burst, or street furniture? I hadn't thought of that until Mr. Walsh said it, and it's a legitimate point. Nevertheless, when you do good work, when you do it above board, when you do it within 12 years, your 12-year terms here on City Council, I will give Mr. Fuentes and all of you a pat on the back. You don't have 13 and a half years to do it. That's why.
He is not talking about this item.
What have I said that's not about this item? I am congratulating the council member for good work. You are anticipating what I'm going to say next. Get off my ass and let me make my point. Let me make my point. I'm talking about Mr. Fuentes. I am giving him a pat on the back for this fucking reason. Let me make my point. Stop taking away my time. Do you see what happens when you don't let me congratulate the council member for good work on item thirty-five?
He is still not talking about...
I am talking about the furniture, and I am complimenting the council member. And I'm saying that I wouldn't have thought that it's maybe money that should be put towards sidewalks and sewer repairs in CD seven. I am complimenting the council member on this item. You are anticipating what I'm saying. Don't anticipate what I'm saying. Fuck you.
Hey, Sergeants, Sergeants, would you come over here, please? Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Dr. Brown.
It's getting very warm in here, Mr. Fuentes, and I want to say to you, thank you for the recommendations of the outdoor furniture. If Daniel Guss would have completed his task to compliment you without the disruption of the city attorney and Mr. Labonge, I'm sure you would have welcomed him in full arms like I'm welcoming you in full arms for my two minutes of addressing you on this issue of street furniture revenue. Incidentally, though, Mr. City Attorney, it is talking about tech corrections and clarifications and for the conditions of the sidewalks and the pipes and the rundown furniture in that area, Mr. Fuentes is doing an excellent job and making a motion of 10 measly dollars... Oh, I'm sorry. $10,000 measly dollars, which will only put a small percent to the real issue of the problems. But I'm going to stay on a positive note because I was distracted by your offensive remarks to the fine Mr. Speaker, Daniel Guss, when you interrupted him as you are not doing so with me. But in Council District Seven, the portion of the street furniture revenue under the Fund 43D 50 in Pacoima Beautiful coordinating acquisition in outdoors, the children love outdoor activities. They love them, Mr. Felipe, and I'm glad that you and Mr. Sadio have the full interest of our compliments to you and gratitude. I'm going to get on my knees to say thank you, because these conditions for our furniture and street revenue money is going for a purpose dedicated to the Pacoima residents. I'm a Pacoima resident as well, and I love the conditions of Mr. Fuentes making these short-term, long-terms under the First and Second Amendment.
No other speakers on the queue. So open the roll. Close the roll. Oh, Mr. Krikorian, I apologize. Thank you. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
For the record, Mr. City Attorney, would you check with other city attorneys on the language that goes out the airwaves? This is not on five-second delay for future meetings and some direction from the court that ruled otherwise. Thank you. Public comment. Los Angeles City Council has a one-minute public comment. Wanda Solomon.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President, and I first want to say, my name is Wanda Solomon. I want to thank the City Council for the beautiful event that was held last night on the evening with African-American authors. It was a wonderful and beautiful occasion. As you know, I want to salute all African-Americans all over the city, and I am here actually to just state that the march that was held on last Saturday was wonderful. It was peaceful, and it brought us together. For my last few seconds, I would like to say, may I get an extension of one minute? It's my birthday week, and I have something important I want to say. So, Mr. President, may I have one extension of one minute, my two minutes, please? Thank you. I wanted to say that...
You can complete us a one-minute comment, ma'am.
Well, I only have five seconds. I get two minutes. May I have one more minute, please?
No, no. Fill out another card and give it to me. If it's your birthday. Thank you very much. Mr. Hussain. Hussain? Thank you. Sergeants, would you check what schools here so we could greet them? Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. Since my last visit here last week on Friday, 872 homeowners and roofers have visited BadLARoofLaw.com and voiced their disbelief about ordinance 183149 could pass without representation of the roofers and distributors in the city of Los Angeles. I firmly believe the City Council has kept in the dark regarding the proponents of this ordinance, namely climate resolve. I'm asking the councilmembers to please bring a motion to the table to get a moratorium on this ordinance. I wish to thank you, Councilmember Labonge, Blumenfeld, and Sadio. Last week, met with me, their staff regarding this ordinance, and I'm pleased asking all other councilmembers to meet with me to explain how this ordinance is a job killer, especially in the Latino market. There are no jobs anymore in the roofing industry since this ordinance has passed. Please take this seriously. Thank you.
William Winston.
My name is William Hayes, and I am in the roofing business industry. And with the ordinance that came out were as the Cool Roof System on homes. Therefore, there are only three types of colors of roof systems that's going, there's all white, white, and tan. You have the... You have the citizens themselves who want different colors, but we do not have time. The manufacturer, supplier, and us, you know, the installers, do not have time to change this. A possible delay of this ordinance would give us time to handle this, you know, to rectify it and make some changes. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Murphy.
Yes, Mr. Prochair. Sorry about the outbursts last week. It couldn't be helped. I was a little mad. But when somebody puts God's name in vain, I get upset. I get very upset, and I will admit, I have a little bad temper. It can't be helped. Okay, elections coming up. Carolyn Ramsey for the fourth district. My current councilman, Mr. Krikorian. Bobby Jean Anderson for District Eight. And Nadine for Council Fourteen. I encourage everybody to get out and vote. I'm telling all my fans to get out and vote, and I'm sorry about last week, Tom.
Randy Work.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Randy Work, and I'm a roofing contractor here in Los Angeles. And right now, 50% of my business is residential re-roofs. And what Building and Safety has done is limited homeowners' choices to the color of roof that you can have on your roof. So when one of you city councilmen need a new roof, and you're going to be required to put on a very light-colored or white roof, you're not going to like it. And I have a small business, and as a consequence, I've lost work already. And as a consequence, if something doesn't change here very quickly, I am going to have to let some guys go that depend on me to, for their livelihood. And it's going to kill me to do that. My least employee's been with me for 11 years, and I don't want to say goodbye to him. But I'm going to have to if I can't get some more business going, and this ordinance is killing my business. Thank you.
Okay. Jose Martinez. Mr. Martinez. Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. I think one minute needs to be reevaluated. That woman, it's her birthday, and we do so many presentations for people on special occasions. It just breaks my heart, but let me get to the point. And by the way, she should also be seen in a visible format. Please get Mr. Weston to come out of the back room. I know he's here. He can step up and make that happen, and we all know it. Now, the issue that all the council members, I would appreciate listening on this, has to do with the item that was at Budget Finance, Route 14-1606. It's a very important item, guys. It's about a legal panel that is going to facilitate fighting against development projects, but it's going to hurt communities. Because, as an example, the Harvard-Westlake project, we're going to see a lawsuit. Save Coldwater will sue if it's approved, okay? So now Harvard will defend itself, and now there's a provision that Mr. Krikorian's made possible to allow them to fund the city's fight, too. So now, the Save Coldwater group, just like the Save Westwood group, by the way, Mr. Bonin, Save Westwood just got crushed by the same firm, Meyer Knave, in an appeal. Meyer Luskin called it a conference center, turned into a hotel. The people said, "Wait," and then they said, "You're done."
All right, thank you.
We don't want that for the.
Jose Martinez. Jose Martinez has left the building. Daryl Gale.
Good morning, City Council. Daryl Gale, environmental advocate. There are many simple things we all can do to lower our carbon footprint and our electricity bills. If you are a homeowner, you can own your solar panels or you can even rent solar panels. There's some local companies that'll allow you to rent solar panels. If you live in an apartment, get an energy-efficient audit. If you're going to buy a car, think about an electric car. They have them new and used. They are expensive if you want a Tesla, but there are used electric cars. We all can recycle. Use your blue bin. Take stuff to Goodwill. Get a tax write-off and be the voice in your home, your school, your community, your church, and in your family. We can all do our part for cleaner energy and a better environment. Thank you.
Mark Simon.
Hi, good morning. I represent the Rodney Drive Tenants Association, a group of long-term, community-involved residents of Los Feliz Village facing imminent eviction under the Ellis Act by a landlord who owns dozens of properties from Hollywood Town to Koreatown to Los Feliz and Silverlake. We support the Renters' Day demands and stand in solidarity with renters citywide who are struggling to defend their homes. The Ellis Act and its cousin, the Costa Hawkins Act, are major obstacles to addressing affordable housing crisis in Los Angeles. These acts must be repealed or significantly amended in the state legislature, and one way to do that is to have the full-throated public as well as behind-the-scenes lobbying support of our elected officials, that is you, and laws passed by you in City Council. But you can't wait until state laws change. L.A. can, should, and must be more aggressive in defending existable, foretelling a housing from the removal by the Ellis Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Room 480 in City Hall. See Renee Whitezer, Planning Deputy, 480 City Hall. Next speaker, Sylvia Sargent. Sylvia here? All right, note her file card. Reverend Roberta Morris.
Hi, I'm also a member of the Rodney Tenants Association and a member of the local clergy who works with the entire community, local homeowners, businesses, and the homeless. And I support the demands of the Renters' Day Coalition and encourage the members here to do all you can to limit the effect of the Ellis Act and to repeal the Ellis Act and the Costa Hawkins Act. We ask the city to please direct the city attorney to investigate all allegations of abuse and bad faith use of the Ellis Act by landlords and developers, and then go after the said developers and landlords with full force of the city legal actions, both civil restraining orders, injunctions, lawsuits for actual and punitive damages, and if indicated, criminal actions. We need you to create and allocate funding for mechanisms to facilitate cooperative purchases of Ellis-threatened rent-support buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to see Renee Whitezer in Room 480, you can continue the discussion. John Walsh.
John Walsh, resident of Hollywood Village. Okay, I told you that our website, J. Walsh Confidential, would chase Antonio out of the race. Now he says that he's doing it for his family and because he loves, he loves California. He's doing it because of the picture in a drug party with Charlie Sheen. That's why. Now, no on Charter One, City Charter One amendment, no on City Charter Two amendment. Go to save our city elections. I want to thank our leader, Mr. Parks. He was alone several months ago, and he said how bad this amendment would be to black people. I'm still, no on City Charter One, no on City Charter Two. We do not cancel election days. And I want you to produce one African-American in America who says, "I'm suffering from voter fatigue." We had a civil war.
Daniel Gus, Daniel Gus.
Mr. Weston is a really good man. He is a mensch. He does good things for animals, as does Found Animals Foundation. That said, what a charade it was yesterday talking about Spay Neuter Day in L.A. There's no press release on the Animal Services website about Spay Neuter Day. In fact, there's no press release on the Animal Services website since June 17th of last year. So you don't give a crap about Spay Neuter? Otherwise, there would have been a press release about it on the city's website. You know what was on the city's website? There's English and Spanish, "How to get a breeder's permit." You know what? And last week, I had lunch with Cindy Montanez in C D six, and I showed her this email from a year ago, when Nury Martinez's office said they were going to stop a breeding operation in C D six. Nury Martinez, no more for C D six. Cindy Montanez, daily news, no on one, no on two.
Mr. Dr. Brown.
Live from Los Angeles, Dr. Brown Bear, sir, as on the card. And just a reminder that AB 194, Measure Number 42, speak at a public meeting even to criticize a politician, a politician. Or your performance is not a disruption, children, but it's a learning issue. When I choose to vote, I definitely don't want to vote on my First Amendment or this Second Amendment because this advertising is gross by Jose Weisar. It's disgusting, filled with lies about communities throughout Council District 14. If you want to see poor people, come out to Boyle Heights and meet the poor. But on another note, vote no on Amendment One, vote no on Amendment Two, because my choice of vote for a candidate will be Gloria Molina. The same way that coward Vera Gose will step down, Gloria Molina will succeed. Thank you.
That completes public comment. This time, I'd like to recognize the fine council member of the first district, Gil Sadio.
Members, I want to introduce you to the future. And the future is right here to my left. It's embodied by Dana Middle School, and I want all you young boys and girls to stand up. These young boys and girls, led by Michelle Crowe Buscaino, sister to our esteemed colleague, are here today as part of the ongoing week of Engineers Week. And so yesterday, we saw several other schools represented, and today, we're graced by the presence of Dana Middle School, and it is the newest, and they know this, they are the first, the newest steam school out of L.A. Unified, the newest steam magnet, and they're located down in the San Pedro area. So this is the future, future engineers, future scientists, future doctors, future mathematicians. This is the future. They'll be working for the city. They'll be working in private government. They'll be working in science and research. Wave and say hello to the future. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tomorrow evening, beginning at 6:00, the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments, together with Move L.A., will be conducting a public forum on transportation issues, a town hall on transportation issues in the San Fernando Valley, including consideration of different infrastructure investments that might be potentially included in a future funding mechanism. So I would urge anyone from the San Fernando Valley or anybody who's interested in transportation in the San Fernando Valley to come on down to Van Nuys City Hall tomorrow evening, beginning at 6:00, so that we can have a thorough discussion about the future of transportation in the San Fernando Valley.
Any other announcements? I got a great announcement, Mr. Fuentes. This morning, I was talking to one of the great urban foresters of Los Angeles in Griffin Park, trimming a tree, and he told me that his wife was a student of my mother at Rowan Avenue School and said how what a wonderful person it is. My mother would have been 100 this year, but to have people, his wife's in the 40s, to have people remember your parents is so important. And to see Joe's sister here, these young people will remember you as the one who's taught them things. So life's a circle, and it's so special, and to serve and to meet people is our most honored, honored act. So I just want to thank all my colleagues and thank all those tree trimmers and street cleaners and trash collectors and storm drain cleaners, police and firefighters and nurses who I've met over this career. We're now at the point of adjourning motions. Well, we have an announcement, so let's call on Mr. Buscaino for announcements. And I don't think, I'm old-school, you can't read an announcement from a.
An iPhone?
iPhone.
We can. It's a new day.
A new day, it's a new year.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and again, thank you, Mr. Sadio, for an amazing week here at City Hall, welcoming our future engineers. Thanks for your leadership, and it's great to welcome my old middle school here, Dana Middle School. Really appreciate them being here. Also, Mr. Ramonu, their advisor, let's give him a round of applause for leading them. And I understand Enrique and Ernesto made a great presentation on the Board of Public Works. Congratulations. I heard you guys did great. Well done. Those who are listening on Channel 35 want to remind everyone, tomorrow's the final Gaffey Street Community Workshop at the Grand Annex, 434 West Sixth Street. Gaffey Street, as we all know, is one of our great streets. And tomorrow, tomorrow night, along with Lonnie, we will be presenting Three Options to Beautify Gaffey Street, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., again at Grand Annex, 434 West Sixth Street. Everyone's welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino, is it worthy visit to come down the San Pedro Freeway to see all those ships hanging out there in Point Furman in the harbor? A lot of ships out there?
Absolutely, and the ships are moving.
Moving in the port. Good job, Mr. Buscaino.
The ships are moving, thank you.
Any other announcements? Adjourning motions? We have adjourning motions. Class, we ask you to stand in reverence to those who have passed for members to call their name and speak in reverence to their life. Going to call on Mr. O'Farrell first.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few days ago, a tragedy befell a well-known actor. His name was Ben Wolfe. He was an actor on American Horror Story, and he was a Hollywood and Council District 13 resident. He was injured while, unfortunately, jaywalking across Hollywood Boulevard, and he passed away from his injuries yesterday. Ben Wolfe was 34. He was a diminutive actor because he had a medical condition as a child, but he found fame and fortune on the show, and he played a character named Meep, had a big following, and he was beloved in his neighborhood. A lot of residents are very upset about his passing. And according to the American Horror Story family spokesperson, they say he was a tremendous professional and an incredibly kind person, beloved by the American Horror Story family, which was said in a statement of his passing. And he will definitely be missed by the residents there along St. Andrews and Hollywood. May he rest in peace, Ben Wolfe.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Very much, and I ask to be adjourned in memory of Michael Atkins, who passed away on February 10th, 2015, the result of a hit-and-run traffic accident, motorcycle versus vehicle at 78th and Western. Mr. Atkins was 31 years of age, a native of Los Angeles. Every day, he looked forward to being with his family and his children. When he wasn't working, he participated in the childhood dream of fixing cars. He also had many other talents. He survived by his wife, three children, a host of family members. He, the family's asking for assistance in funeral costs by going on a website, www.gofundme.com/m9oz3s. The family greatly appreciate any contributions for his homecoming, homegoing, which is currently pending information. And next week, we'll do a reward motion in hopes that we can help solve this crime.
Any more on this side? Mr. Corretts, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last year, I was pleased to honor Nancy Silverton here in council chambers after she won the James Beard Award for Outstanding Chef of 2014. And sadly asked that we adjourn in memory of her father, Lawrence Silverton, who passed away. away recently at the age of eighty-nine in his Encino home after a long bout with prostate cancer. He was an attorney and real estate developer and born and raised in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, where his father ran a downtown jewelry store. He served in the U.S. Army and was stationed in Japan just after World War II. The GI Bill financed his education at Grinnell College in Iowa and at the University of Michigan School of Law. And he and his wife, Doris, moved to the San Fernando Valley, where he established a successful law practice, often representing architects. And this led to an involvement in civic affairs, particularly in architectural preservation, which became one of his many passions. His many hobbies included woodworking, chess, flying his own private plane, bicycling, motorcycling, travel and food. His other interests included local politics and various environmental and progressive causes. He lived a very rich, full life, and he will be missed. And he's survived by his sisters, Riva Levy and Fay Gibbs, daughters Nancy and Gail, his longtime companion Judy Hellinger, grandchildren Andreas, Nicholas, and Annika Crackle, Vanessa Silverton-Peele, Benjamin Silverton-Peele, Oliver Silverton-Peele, and two great-grandchildren, Lorenzo and Camita. His wife of fifty-three years, Doris, predeceased him in two thousand and one. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Members on the side here, thank you. I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Alex Mariah Sue, ninety-six years old, a fighter in World War II, an ace fighter, was ranked fourth of all the fighters in World War II as an ace, and lived a wonderful life. Also, Harry Sigurdstrom, ninety-one years old, developed much of Orange County and including the various wonderful cultural centers that are down there. Lived a long, fine life. Gary Owens, who was on KNPC for many, many years, laughing, died the same day that Stan Chambers did. We want to remember Gary Owens for his work in the community, and he survived by his wife of fifty-seven years. We wish Gary Owens his thoughts. And lastly, too young, Leslie Gore, who with that great hit, It's My Party, I'll Cry If I Want To, and all those other pop hits, sixty-eight years old and cancer. We will miss her voice and her love. Members, go serve the city well. Look at those great young people who are here today from the fifteenth district. We know you're the leaders of the future. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. We thank the staff.